All right, let's go ahead and call our Board of Adjustments meeting to order.
Pagan.
Yes.
Moralia.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Stupin. Daisy.
Yes.
Thompson. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I salute. Second.
Motion by Naima, second by John to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so we had thirteen documented sales last year, from the last year. They didn't change any of the building prices, but they changed your assessed value on your land by thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, so all land went up thirty percent.
Residential, commercial, everything?
Everything, actually, yep. They will be going through town this year to reassess values of your property. So, lay on the lookout for somebody knocking on your door, leaving you a note, make sure you call back and have them come in. To get the proper assessment of your value.
Your house.
Okay, but not just to approve the assessment, but anybody can look through it, just.
Is it by alphabetical order or by?
No, it's by parcel. Yeah, so it makes it real difficult. I have it electronic copied by Naima, but they won't print it to us anymore.
What is it normally?
What?
The increase?
It varies, I mean, what, so your assessor, our assessor looks at the sales, and so if somebody, if you sell multiple houses that are within the same timeframe range, because you've got older than, honestly, older than seventies, nineteen seventy built, and then you have the newer ones, and then you have brand new houses. And so based on that, they look at the sales, and if they're selling for more than their assessed value, then depending on a percentage, and don't ask me how they figure it out, but they have a way to figure out whether that percentage is where it needs to be, because they want to be greater than, I think, ninety percent assessed value to make it, you know, marketable, or whatever, so, and that would determine whether all those houses in that type of range will go up or not, or down. And the reasoning for the increase in the land is we've had multiple bare lots that have sold for fifteen thousand dollars, so they increased everybody's lots by thirty percent.
Is thirty percent, you have to bring me up on the history, is thirty percent the norm?
I don't know, but there is a norm.
Like for every five years?
I think it's, I know in the most of Elton, lots are under ten thousand. The newer sections of Elton, those are the ones that are higher, and since, you know, like I said, several lots, what they have lost have been sold for more than fifteen, or fifteen thousand or more, that's why it went up.
Oh, for sure.
Sounds interesting to see.
Sorry, I have to turn my mask over.
Correct.
Correct, at where I'm sitting.
Well, this being, not my first rodeo on that, I went to the ones that I'm familiar with in the past years.
And that's, you know, public knowledge, anybody can look through that book at any time, you can go on Beacon, that's called Beacon, and you can look at property values. If we had appeals, you know, they're required to state why they feel that their property value is wrong, whether it's the house or the land, and they have to give comparable properties that would support that decrease, they're looking for a decrease. But I didn't have anybody, so we haven't actually had anyone for quite a few years. And usually they tell us at the utilization office, send them our way, and we'll talk to them about it, if it's, you know, something that, yeah.
Because most of, when a person would come in here and look, you see the assessed price here and then the sales price. So if it's assessed at ninety-two thousand and it sells for a hundred and forty, so be it.
You see? But it looks like without digging through, I don't want that parcel.
Like it should have gotten in the mail in February.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
So we have to actually pay ours, so.
Yeah.
I suppose, going down there?
Yeah.
So.
Who wants to think about it, but I approve, except whatever, ask a motion.
I second.
Motion by Natalie, second by Naima to accept the assessment, assessment book, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move to adjourn. Having no appeals, I move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Naima, second by Natalie to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to our special meeting, approval of the agenda.
I approve, I move to approve the agenda.
I would like something added just for discussion sake, after talking to Scott this morning, he'd like to discuss if anything else happens with the virus quarantining thing that the city contemplate being prepared, whether it's helping organize to keep people safe. He just wants us to have a discussion about it. Okay, I agree.
I have all those things to discuss.
Cool. So we got a motion by Naima to approve the agenda?
I mean, well, I have other business listed on that.
I'll second.
Motion by Naima, second by Natalie to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Christina is here, I added her to the agenda after having a discussion with her about use of the center or the library for music classes.
I'm Christina Gindel, we moved here in November on Eighth Ridge, and I own Music Therapy Empower. And practice in Brookings, and so I'm a board certified music therapist. And I reached out to Naima and Christina, I serve all the region, I go here on, Esteline, Two Falls, kind of all around within a two hour radius, but because of the health concerns, all of those contracts have been temporarily suspended, just, right now it's just for March, but I'm guessing April, May, since I work, I work with nine care centers, I work with a place like Advance here on, I work with medically fragile adults, and I work with two hospice care agencies. And so, just as a way to kind of keep some income, I was planning on offering classes in Elton anyway, but was gonna wait till maybe the summer and see what I could organize, but was hoping to offer like early childhood classes of zero to five, it's like kinder music style classes, possibly if anyone is interested in guitar or ukulele classes, adults or children. Right now I offer all those classes at the Arts Council, which is also temporarily stopped, probably. So, we're not sure yet if we're gonna continue having the series, because we can offer it, the city says no, but we can still offer it since it's like ongoing to small groups, two or three people in class. So, but if the families feel, you know, like it's a risk and then they can't come, it's not really fair for them to miss that one class that they purchased. So, not really sure if that will, we'll probably temporarily suspend those as well. But yeah, I was looking to use just some pop-up classes, like one-time classes, or just a couple of classes, either at the library or the community center, I'm not sure, I haven't been in the community center, I'm guessing it's a big building that's kind of wide range. So I thought the library, I, you know, sometimes with the little kids, and then they run around more, so it's just a big open space. So I thought the library might be a nice opportunity for some classes as well, I'm not sure since I'm new to town, I've never been in the library or the community center, so. Yeah, I was looking to, like I said, just kind of pop-up classes, and not an ongoing thing yet. As far as ongoing things, things people had suggested, you know, maybe to work with Parks and Rec and stuff like that, but I don't know what my step was gonna be like with everything being up in the air like everyone else has. So, I thought it would be a nice opportunity, have some new classes for kids. And do also offer kind of the, we had talked about working with the Altrusa program here in town, that they work with teaching English, using music for that, offering that, so. But right now, looking in the coming weeks, just thinking about some early childhood classes, kinder music classes. So, I know that Christina said there's a fee, there's usually a rental fee involved, so I guess I would request that I be waived or partially waived, or I don't know how much that is. How much is the fee?
For the community center down in Left Hall, it's a hundred bucks for six hours or less.
Okay.
Or if you wanted to use this office, this space, it'd be max of thirty dollars.
Okay, so.
Would something like this size work?
It would work, yeah, this would be perfect.
This might be better.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah, when they start running, it's not free.
It's a little more than ten.
Not free.
So what are your, what are your times and like?
It's only like an hour, it'd be an hour class.
Okay.
Like days or nights or?
Yeah, I'm not sure on the schedule yet, because I have no idea what my schedule will be, it would probably be a Saturday time, and maybe an evening time, maybe a daytime, it depends on what people are, you know, will be interested in, if they wanted to do a three week intro to ukulele or something, but the pop-up classes, all the classes are an hour or less.
And you provide the instruments?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I provide all the instruments, I carry professional liability insurance that travels with me, and it covers my equipment as well, so if something breaks, that's like my heart, something expensive, then it's covered. And, yeah, it seems like there's a, people are kind of excited about doing different things, so.
Well, if I might interject, when I was thinking about doing just solo things before I started the market, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry, if I'm not mistaken, it was ten dollars per hour, wasn't it, or wasn't it ten dollars?
I don't, isn't that changed?
I don't know if that's, because we've only talked about the community center, and here would be better, and I believe it was ten dollars, ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, I mean, that would be affordable enough.
It is, it is ten dollars.
But the max is thirty dollars.
Ten an hour, max of thirty dollars.
Okay, yeah, I mean, ten dollars would be affordable, so, the classes, as far as I figure, maybe for early childhood, ten dollars a person, for like guitar, probably twelve dollars a person. So I know some of the preschools in town were interested.
There's a lot of interest out there, I saw.
Yeah, lots of interest, and, you know, I wanted, that's Christie and I were gonna talk about maybe through Parks and Rec, offering stuff this summer. I have a ton of instruments and stuff. Natalie's theme hall. It's like a ton of drums and guitar, electric guitars, and electronic drum set, and editing software, there's just a lot of possibilities for, you know, programming, which since I live close by, it is nice to do it close by, but I'm not quite sure, like, what my schedule will be, I really hope that things, you know, like everybody hopes nothing grows, and all those care centers can open back up. But some of them.
You would be, you would still want to do a little bit of something, something here for the residents, even when you did go back to work with the care centers.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. Because I don't know how long it'll last, if it, like, right now I do four classes at the Brookings Arts Council, or five classes, I teach guitar to veterans, and work with vets like with PTSD, and then I do Uke and Guitar for both youth and adults. And so, those are like a twelve week period, and so if we, you know, go through a whole month, then that's gonna push the end of the class later. So right now my Saturdays are kind of, they're all kind of built up, but, so I don't know when, but just to have that available. When I do plan classes, I'll do a, like, when I do a series, I'll do a set series and keep the same thing, normally no canceling or anything like that, so then people kind of know what it is, where it is, and when it is, yeah. So, I had said, like, to Christina, maybe waiting to, you know, next week when the schools are open, or just seeing when things are opening, there, I'm guessing that we wouldn't have more than this many people in a class, or kids, I'm not sure, but based on population size.
Well, that sounds like that would be amenable, works with the social distancing. Jeff, and I know that, that it would be, for me, I know it would be okay, because the cleaning and, you know, sanitation and everything, that would, that would work if anybody were worried about it.
Yeah.
I think it's a win-win.
Sorry, would it be appropriate for her to contact the daycare sometime? Some of them have contacted me, Raquel, Jill, and you.
Yep.
I don't know.
She's not that big.
Yeah, I don't know about, you know, the cost, I think, for them, so, that's the only thing, but if families each pay five dollars per kid, that can cover the cost, it's just.
I think music is a good therapy during this time, so if we're voting, I approve.
What we vote on? I, I can see using your talents through our Park and Rec program, and if that's going to happen, I, I don't see an issue with waiving the rental fee to the center for a service like that to our citizens.
Oh, well, I.
Maybe that's just me.
That, I think that, that's a.
Well, let's see, like, how many signed up, and, I mean, she could put her in this room.
Well, that's, that's where she would be.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So even if there's something going on in the community center, it wouldn't bother.
That would be perfect size, just be a perfect size, nice and sturdy and.
So you, you would be open to doing, as she was speaking of in terms of the Park and Rec and?
Oh, yeah, I would love to do Park and Rec, I'm hoping that when the Arts Council class is in, then I can enjoy our farm and do some stuff close by and not have to drive. Not have to drive, so.
Do I need a motion?
If it's a waiving of the fee, then yes.
I move to waive the fee.
One second.
Thank you.
Motion by Naima, second by John to waive the fee for use of the Center for Music Therapy Empower.
It's not the center.
Or the, the council, sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, so who do I contact to schedule everything? You, okay.
Once we get Park and Rec rolling, we'll get you in touch with whoever our Park and Rec person is and.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then roll that.
Music in the park or something.
Ooh, liking that, John.
Can you please say, yeah.
Park and, music in the park.
Yes. Yeah, there's a lot, especially like, when I moved here, I contacted Altrusa and the classes that they have, the Spanish classes, and we were talking about getting grant money and you doing the Spanish music along with, you know, because when the adults are learning Spanish, they're learning the same similar concepts as the kids, and so doing like phonics and maccions and, what's that?
Are you going to Spanish then?
I, yeah, I speak Spanish, I took four years, I'm not, not, no, not that much. And that was, it's easy in music. So, that was like, they were really interested in that, since they have a big turnout, and so they had thought, working with the city or doing something with the city, which like, some of those grants is too late, but maybe next year, or there's other grants and partnerships, I know there's a lot with diversity grants and like throughout, even through Brookings and extending stuff, yeah.
That's cool.
So, that would be a lot of fun, having kind of like a big cross-cultural music thing.
Music in the park, when they get kind of a little bit warmer, that'd be kind of cool. Even like Saturdays or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When I lined up all the music for next, for Music on Main, then depending on the band, it was packed.
Yeah.
Those people together.
Yeah, and food.
Maybe not so.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you guys, I appreciate that, so, you can let me know when you feel it's appropriate to come in and do that, since now everything is, shall we say, restricted.
You've been, you've been approved, so just get in touch with Susan and make that, make that work, and remember that if, seriously, if music in the park is something that you would be open to organizing, I think that the community during all of this, that would be kind of cool, it's outside, you don't have a problem necessarily with social distancing, well, except for children.
Yeah.
We, you know, we have to, maybe it's just a vote, I don't know, but it's a.
Yeah, that sounds good, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
No, no.
Thanks.
All right, next on the list is Park and Rec, what'd you got, Park and Rec?
Uh, well, we, we interviewed a person for the position, and we will have a conversation about that in a minute.
Okay, concession stand? I only have one additional call, Scott was in charge of that, so, yeah, he got called into work.
Library computer.
Up here.
Gallery up here.
Up here, I'm sorry. Everything that we have asked for in regards to whether or not you could, if it did not work, if it could be returned, the woman said that yes, we will work with you, and everything is provided, and then there is, there is the possibility of my, my, thank you, thank you, thank you. I need more water. Purchasing the, the, purchasing that particular one, or you move some of the money that has already been spent to the purchase of that particular unit, and she feels as though it is going to last a long time, so we said that if everything that we wanted to know about was taken care of, then we would say yes, and I feel as though everything has been taken care of, so I will give her the yay tomorrow.
We already opened on that, right?
We opened on that, yes.
Trees.
Now, I talked to Steve today, I didn't know if you guys had talked to him, I called him up and asked him upon. So, last year we had thirty evergreens, sixteen autumn blazes, five lindens, and eight bur oak. He doesn't recommend any more evergreens because.
They're almost done there.
Yeah, and the autumn blazes go for about thirty to thirty-five dollars, everything is about thirty dollars for a tree, there's sixty spots down there, and he suggests that we do a third this year and a third next year, because it takes about three to four years to in the ground before you move, before you want to move it, so that's what he suggests.
So he gets thirty trees.
Yeah, well, a third, or twenty, twenty trees. So whatever you guys, you know, a few autumn blazes, a few lindens, birch or elm, I don't know if you want to do elm because of the Dutch elm disease.
Yeah.
Um, he couldn't find any bur oak when he was looking, but autumn blazes are the big salads, obviously.
Yeah, I want.
They get big. Autumn blaze and what else? They get big, lindens, bur oak, but anyways, they're all about thirty to thirty-five dollars for a tree, so.
Are there different options of maples besides the autumn blaze? I believe there is that one, but we could probably.
I believe there is.
Yeah, there is, yeah, so, I mean.
So that would be six hundred dollars approximately.
Yeah, so he, he suggests a third though, because give those time to grow, and then.
Right, definitely, yeah.
Well, I mean, we've got some in different, and if we do that in thirds every year, we'll have some to sell. Yep, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I was like.
And when we do that, the people just pay the moving fee, right?
Correct.
Yes, that's, I did it last year, it's, it's not, so.
I'm gonna pay mine up front, I'm gonna check, two autumn.
Well, then you could just plant them in your yard for now.
But I don't, he doesn't have them.
Well, I'm saying, if you have to order yours on top of the ones that we ordered, then you can just take them and plant them yourself.
Make a circle.
Are you, are you gonna do that? Because I might want to do that.
So are you doing twenty or doing twenty-four now?
I know, I know, okay, so I know in the past Brookings, through the Park and Rec department, they put it in the front page of the yellow shop, or all the trees you can get, they're little guys, they're tiny. These ones aren't.
These aren't.
But I mean, in comparison, you can, you send in your check and say what you want, and they order them in bulk for you with the whole town, so I mean, maybe that's a possibility of something you could do.
We want to replant all the trees in our boulevard, but we want to do them all at the same time, we're gonna need like, I don't know, eight, maybe?
So there's ten, so we can only order ten more.
But I don't know, don't hold me down for that, I gotta talk to my husband.
These would be, they would pay for a lot, right?
On top, yeah, and on top of them.
On top of our. Yeah, that's what I mean, you know what I mean. It's not late to be doing this for a citywide order, because they need it by the end of the month, right? We need to.
Get that next year.
Because, and we're not gonna order. And we're not gonna order twenty extra trees and have them sit here with no payment.
Yeah, we pay for it in advance.
Anybody know that we can tell after the project is all over with anyway?
Yeah, yes, very true. Good point, yeah.
No, I think emotionally, we approved the six hundred dollars for the twenty trees suggested.
And then Steve, and I told Steve, he'll be the, you know, he'll, it'll be his choice why he goes to purchase this, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Greg, second by Naima to purchase, give Greg, give, sorry, Steve, purchasing power of six hundred dollars for our tree bank trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
I'll bring you my check tomorrow.
Hey, I've had people question about cleanup day.
Yes.
Are we kind of planning on June? I did talk to Cook. They'll work with us. However, we need to as far as the project is at. Obviously, the whole east west side of town isn't going to be torn up at once, so we have to do some in the alley. They'll work with us on that. But we do need, we should really talk about a day.
Take a day. It wasn't last year. It was the weekend, June seventh.
June seventh, I think it was.
Weekend after Memorial.
How soon do we have to, no, it's.
Well, it's whatever. There's gonna be, we don't have to do it now because most of the dates that they're chosen are in March and April are the most dates that people are gonna choose. And we used to do it in April or May. So by pushing it up to June, we're less likely to have somebody else pick that date.
Because there was a lot of, well, a lot of.
Before graduation.
Graduation.
There are always gonna be some people that aren't really happy with the date.
Okay, do we, well?
What, what, when is that?
The seventeenth, I think.
Right?
Seventeenth of May.
And it may be a good idea to push it later with flooding issues? I don't know.
That's a point. That is a very.
What if we moved it back to the middle of June? Or thirteenth?
For the flooding issues?
Well, I would think by, say, the weekend.
And we don't have to worry about Harvest Festival?
No, we don't.
Harvest Festival.
Would that be a bad thing if, if somebody does have flood damage, they're probably gonna have it in May.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. And June is usually the, usually when, hopefully, when things start turning around.
Yeah.
Well, we're doing good so far.
Yeah, we are.
What would June twelfth, that be?
It has, it's a Saturday.
What's a Saturday?
Oh, no, wait. No, it is a Friday. Sorry.
So these numbers in your head.
Well, that would get us around, people having stuff on the curb on Memorial weekend, right?
Well, you'd hope so, yeah.
Well, we would.
Right. But then if you moved it back a week after that, then maybe it wouldn't, wouldn't have the stuff on the curb early out.
Right.
What if it, June twelfth? I had, that's just a thought.
Well, sometime in June, that's good. Sometime we do, definitely. Because you're always gonna have those folks that are gonna put it out there no matter when the date is.
Okay.
And and we should mention, how many days before cleanup? Can you have the stuff out?
The week before.
The week before.
One week.
So then that.
So that weekend before, so it'll be a whole week before, so.
Okay.
And that's a way.
Yeah, starting the fifth, I would say. Okay, so Dave Miller, who's the code enforcement gentleman, is gonna work. They drop, give you guys each letters. So he's wondering if that's how you want to do it with the three letters. One say, hey, this is something you need to clean up. If they don't respond at that one, then the next one's a little bit more, armory, whatever you want to call it, saying, saying you need to clean it up. And then the third one would be your notice of violation. We're gonna clean it up if you don't. And that, the third one would be sent out by certified letter, so you would get it. You would know that they picked that up or you'd get it back. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Okay, now, what about the dates? Because the first notice is October second.
No, this is just an example.
I, I understand. So these are not, he would do this on the seventh after giving a notice on the second. What's, what's the time in between?
Well, it's pressed, it's spelled out in our ordinance book. I believe that you give, the first, our first one has always been a verbal and I think we've, I know the letter, once they send a letter of violation, I think they have seven business, seven days to get it done.
Okay.
I can ask him. It looks like they gave him about twenty-third of September, twenty-third of October. I mean, who knows if this is the same person?
But I mean, no, you can see down here, please take this, I'm trying to correct these violations by October seventh, October twenty-third. So then he went back around. That's his second canvas through town.
Right, but he'll, he'll knock our ordinance as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
So I assume he'll come in to talk. Do you give the dates?
I've already heard that's a copy of our ordinance book.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we kind of discussed it. It was gonna, he was gonna go out and then.
That would be different.
Then it's gonna give people time for free cleanup and then obviously he'll be back.
Okay, the other thing he wanted to discuss is once we reach property that has to be abated, are we going to have the city employees do that? And if so, if the city employees are gonna do that, we have to have a, a set wage that they're gonna charge per hour for whatever, whether they need to use the dump truck or whatever. And I think some of that's already partially set. The other option, obviously, is to hire somebody to come in and do it.
I'm gonna have to ask Steve. Steve's probably not gonna have time.
Yeah, I would think we'd all, yeah, I don't know, our, we want, our dump trucks, that reliable to, I don't know.
I guess I never meant to keep them from playing that is.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have anything to, we don't have raffles on the motor to pick it up and dump it into the truck. Do you have raffles?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, I was pretty sure that they did.
Okay.
I think that was part of when we purchased the new one. I could, I don't know for sure.
That's something, yeah, I mean, I haven't asked.
Yeah, that's how we do.
Well, maybe we just leave it at this. We ask, just, we just ask Steve.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Quite honestly, that's, yeah.
Okay, and then he just wants to remind you that, you know, there are obviously maybe some costs upfront that we'd have to pay that we would obviously bill to the individual if we had to hire somebody in to do it.
Well, another thing we need to think about is one of, I mean, our city employees going to relatives' houses to do abatement. There's gonna be a direct conflict with interest.
Well, then I just don't think we need to put our city employees in any situation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay.
Is that different?
Yeah. That's all the questions for him. So I will.
He must, Steve stopped in and asked about hiring for advertising to hire summer help for mowing, mainly for mowing services, but you know.
Thirty hours a week?
Yeah, thirty hours.
And then he said something about mower exchange again? Did he say anything to you?
No, we did not. I don't think we were at that point.
Oh, maybe, maybe I just got confused with mowing and mowing exchange, so. But he said something about, yeah, thirty hour week, part timer, mowing. Yeah.
That'll be okay.
Yeah. Probably. I don't think we need to do that, you know.
Jason stopped in and, well, actually, I was over there when it happened. His, the computer over there seems to be on its last leg. And so he wants to wonder if you guys are okay with him purchasing a new one if he needs it. I don't know how it works or just.
Huh? Didn't Denise purchase that one?
No, it was purchased back in Kendra. It was still here, but it was purchased used.
They just got a new screen for it?
This one is, I don't know. I don't know. This was like, the whole unit is, is mostly in the screen.
Oh, gotcha. Time out, I was just thinking.
I don't know. So yes, no, maybe, I don't think about it.
If it doesn't work, it needs to be replaced.
Is it the VOS system or?
No, 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 no. The computer that he uses.
Yeah, I had issues when I was trying to get.
Well, just a simple computer that, that's not.
No, I like.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's okay, yeah. And then Steve had, somebody from SBN called him about striping at the, the two blocks by the school. Either, you know, right now the school paints them themselves. There's an option to have them grooved into the street but, and taped, I guess, that way so it's not wearing off as easily. That's fifty five hundred dollars to have that done.
Isn't that roguing the tour?
That's, part of the bid is what they're looking for. Is do we want that as a cost in the bid?
Did they say we have extra?
We don't know. We haven't bid it.
Yeah, but is it?
Well, I mean, it's market.
Maccions or what, is it?
Parking, for parking stripes.
Oh, parking stripes.
And he wasn't sure whether it was just the side of the school or whether it was both sides. But I know that we talked about doing both sides diagonally to allow parking, especially down, you know, in front of those homes and stuff. They don't, that's what we're trying to do.
The accidental curvy guy over there. Not by the homes.
Yeah, it was.
The street it is, not by the homes, no.
I mean, what, oh, it is going to be, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was like, no, no, I'm pretty sure this will go down now. Okay, so we have more water for you?
Listen, I want to wait on that because I want to see if we're gonna have de-watering issues.
Yeah.
That's, and that's gonna be a lot of money, so.
Well, and really, it'd almost be something, maybe if the school wanted that dump, they, you know, they could do it. I don't know that. I mean, it seems, honestly, the lines are that hard to paint again every year.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Martin, I mean, you can see them on the curb. The ones that are gonna be mandatory to paint are probably the handicap spots and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, they have handicap as a sign there too, so.
Yeah, well, it's hard to tell sometimes.
Yeah.
Do they have signs up at the school?
Yeah, they do, but they're way, way bad.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Good. Okay, I think we said something about council pay changing that. We discussed that at our last meeting.
What?
Council pay.
Oh.
Okay, wanna elaborate or? We talked about changing the council pay so that you get paid regardless of if you're at the meeting because the council members are doing so much outside of meetings.
Oh, the, the, yes.
So a regular meeting, you'd still get paid for it.
For, yes, yeah.
Well, like, my case is our student's case. You know, sometimes I'll get, I have to get called out to work. I have to hear, or he gets called, I mean.
For a special meeting that wouldn't.
Right, yes.
Or a regular meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, I think we do a lot outside of here that people don't realize we do, so.
Yeah.
Well, I move that the council persons get paid. Oh, whether they miss a meeting or not, for the regular meetings. And if you miss a special meeting, then you don't get paid.
I don't care.
Well, is that a second?
What is that?
Not a second.
Oh, earth. I, I move that that be.
Now, second.
So, okay, um, motion by Naima, second by John to reinstate the regular pay.
Well, you know, I could say something.
I don't care. It don't matter to me. I.
You must be hungry now.
Council.
No, I just, no, I just, I just don't care.
I don't hate out, I don't worry. I don't think we need to, I don't need to.
Better than me.
I don't think we need to.
One way or two, I'm just saying.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If you're staying.
Um, so do we want to have discussion on procedures and processes with the COVID nineteen?
What are they, what are they doing with the patients as far as like the city itself?
Well, the city itself, what we're doing is if, if we get it or a family member gets it, we go home for the fourteen days and we, we're supposed to be getting paid. And we don't have to use sick time or vacation. So we have to quarantine ourselves and that's what the city recommends, so. And we, so.
I think we meant more emergency state.
Oh, emergency.
Yeah, for, you know, like the city as, as a whole. I mean, like, you know, what are they, are they acting any more than what the, the governors allow?
No, I mean, I mean, I think it is what it is. I mean, the, if, if, if it got down to it, only certain personnel would be at work. It's, yeah, I mean.
A lot of companies are doing that on their own.
Yeah.
Without.
Nothing is, yeah, nothing's really happening. There's an emergency situation. I mean, yeah, everybody's going home except for the needed personnel. They may come and move snow or something, but other than that, no.
Isolated.
Yeah, they were isolated, so.
Take your Lysol and go hang out in your loader.
Yeah.
Sorry, I shouldn't poke fun.
But, you know, if there was a, a vaccine that got dropped, if it got really bad and they had a vaccine, what would happen is there would be some spots around town or for the city of, the county of Brookings. And everybody going in and, well, these, these guys are here. Bob said.
I mean, you can say Bob said that, but you can see it. The cocktail center.
Yeah, or there'd be a couple of different spots set up. I mean, yeah. Nothing else is, I mean, we got emergency text messaging now, but, I mean.
That was one of my questions is the, the text messaging of the.
Yeah.
Emergency.
Emergency.
Yeah.
Have we ever done one?
Mm-hmm, we did one, one, from water, yeah, last fall.
Okay. Test it out, see if it works, I mean.
I think, yeah, it seems, it, it tells me something that, that it went through. It's either gonna leave a message or you're gonna answer the phone. I can get it because I have my phone.
I was gonna say, I know about it.
I don't know, and you may, you know, other people, after the facts, other people have signed up and maybe that's why. I don't know.
I have to go back in there and look at it.
I think a bare minimum, we need to do what the state recommends, you know, a bare minimum.
Yeah.
You know, if there's something else we should do above and beyond, I guess, what that would be, but.
I think all of us sitting here would volunteer to help out if we had elderly that need to get to a doctor's appointment or need food or supplies. Council members definitely would step up.
Right. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, so. Push comes to shove, we can.
I saw a thing today that said the kids for the outdone that need food, um, they're not gonna supply it at the school. They're gonna supply it in Flanger and Brookings. I got an email on that today. By the time I put it in the paper, it'd be too late, but. So if there's any kids that are wanting.
Is it on the Facebook page? They're gonna need to ride their bikes?
Right.
Sorry, who's providing it?
I'm curious. The schools? I have no idea.
I don't back, the backup project was gonna do some, but that's, you know, obviously, where are you gonna put it? Like, probably here.
We have a very high percentage of kids in our school that have free or reduced lunches.
Yes.
It is a very, I know that from when we did daycare information, that it is a very high percentage, like, don't quote me, but forty-some percent, if I remember right. It's a lot. And. So how did you hear?
I got an email. Maybe I'll share it to my Facebook page tomorrow. Because I dropped the same thing.
I mean, would it be possible to move it to the Canadian Center or something or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because.
Well, if you, if you send it, maybe go down and get it. And then.
Would they allow that, though, if you're not the person?
We have to, we have to find out.
Right.
We have to find out.
Yeah, Brookings, the kid has to, the child has to show up to get Brookings, which, I mean, that's what they're saying anyway. Yeah. In all regular school days, they're providing if you're on free or reduced lunches.
Yes.
So, I mean, like, my daughter goes to school and I, and all within two hours of them calling off school through the twenty-seventh, they sent out a survey to know if you were, A, a healthcare provider, nurse, worked in a hospital kind of thing, and if you needed care, because they're gonna supply care for those emergency people, and if you're on free or reduced lunches or need food. And then a couple hours later. And then a couple hours later, they sent out an itinerary of how that's all gonna work, where you can pick up your food, when you can pick it up, everything. Yeah, she's, she's a sharp cookie on the wall.
I'm looking at that when I go in tomorrow, in the morning.
Yeah. I mean, if we can use the community center as a hub, I mean.
Are you allowed to do that?
Why not? So, I mean, for.
The governor's saying no, no places where there's fifty people, thirty to fifty people, that's a, that's a, that's a gathering, that's.
You have your time, you can come and pick it up, A through D, have.
Do we go look at tonight, and see?
Yeah, just forward it to us.
Okay, I'll come down there on the way home, correct and look at it.
Oh, gotcha, it's there.
It's actually working now, yeah, I should go.
Good idea.
Yeah, we, we should, we should be able to make it, you know, kids love it.
Put your arms up, it's funny.
Uh, and I think I saw Terry was gonna have the.
She's coming in tomorrow.
Yeah, and then she did offer to deliver too, I think.
Yep, she did, so. She was left her phone number for people to call, you know, and, I mean, even beating South Dakota, they required them to drive up. And they still had sixty.
Sixty-three, yeah.
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three.
So that's really good. Do it that way. And Terry did a really good job of it, from what I heard.
Mm-hmm. So.
So, if you need anything, reach out to your council members, we're willing to help. I have Brookings every day, if you need me to go try and find you some toilet paper.
Walmart had toilet paper yesterday.
I was in Walmart, yeah.
We got a pack of toilet paper and five minutes later, the whole room's.
I was in there today, just trying to grocery shop, and it was.
No, if you like broccoli, that's the only frozen, there's no vegetable, there's nothing.
Good feeling.
I couldn't believe it, when I was there on Saturday, there was like a very small handful of frozen fries, french fries. I was like, seriously?
There seems to be more idea, I don't know what's.
I'm actually gonna get no butter today.
No, butter, no.
Really?
No butter, Walmart, no butter.
That great clubs, that little.
Chicken nuggets, yeah.
There's that meat place.
Wishbone.
Wishbone.
They have churned butter.
You shouldn't say that on camera, they're gonna be sold out now.
And a lot of.
Making more butter.
And a lot of, uh, meat that comes from, yeah, they've got a lot, they've got a lot of things here.
So. We need to go into executive session.
Yes.
All right, need a motion.
So move.
Is that Greg?
Yep.
Motion by Naima, second by Greg, to go into executive session for personnel. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, can they all be like this?
Yes. I'll run it up to you.
I'm back there anymore.
Okay, we came out of executive at nine oh seven P.M. So we need a motion for our Park and Rec director, forty hours a week, full-time, seasonal, uh, no more than seven hundred and twenty hours, which is the equivalent to eighteen weeks, at fifteen dollars an hour for Natalie Bumstead. So.
And I still second.
So we have a motion by Natalie, second by Naima. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move we adjourn.
I say.
Motion by Naima, second by Greg, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.